VDOT just bought a paper recently. We're gonna bring it up and pay for it.
Yeah.
The paper's in Dickinson down there right now. And as soon as it gets done, we'll have it.
And six twenty-four is on the block six your plan?
Six twenty-four, yeah. I don't, I don't have the full plan in front of me. It may be a few years out, but I'm, I'm pretty sure where it is on the, on the plan.
It is?
Yeah.
I have it there.
Yeah, I think I know where you look at it.
I think you do.
Let me mention Sarah Circle. The gentleman from American Legion mentioned it earlier and he kinda threw that in at the end. He's a bus driver down there that has a problem.
I heard he mentioned something, but I couldn't.
A year, a year and a half ago when I first came up with it, that was the first complaint I had. And he didn't finish the whole story. This gentleman disappointed it. There's a culvert that goes from Sarah Circle over, under the Dammel Boone Road toward the railroad that is a half to three-fourths full. Every rain like this one we got this week, it, it floods several homes, basements up through there, uh, on that circle. And I was told, I guess, a year ago that there was some new machines that would actually replace culverts. And they, the two people from VDOT left here and went down there and talked to property owners. And that's a, that's the last I've heard of it.
Yeah, that was Mr. Christian and myself way down.
It was, yes, yes.
Uh, we have plans to, to put in a new culvert there and, and change the, the angle of it. Because the angle it's sitting on right now, once the creek gets up, it's backflushing like a, through a culvert. Uh, it has been put in for environmental clearance. So, we will, we do have the work planned to do, just waiting on clearances and, um, things are just getting really backed up with shortage of labor and materials and everything.
That's understandable. He mentioned the west side of Sarah Circle. That sounds like just a chug over or something on that end. I drove it two or three times just looking and seeing what he was talking about. And that culvert's a problem. I think that's the main thing.
I, I agree. And we, and we do have a plan to replace.
Alright.
I have a, this is a question that a citizen had asked me in our community and he may be watching and that's okay. And I'll try to explain the best I know how. I know VDOT wants people to go to the website and
Yes.
You know, to do the, fill out the work orders and things like that. So, is there a way to, it could come from any one of our districts and all these work orders go in, but there's no feedback in, to us in, in our county that we're able to, you know, off the spreadsheet, you know, having some sort of feedback, you know, that way.
I can, I can definitely get the board some information on current open work orders and, and that sort of thing.
Well, that should, that would be helpful. I mean, I guess that's what we're trying to get at because, you know, a lot of citizens from each of our districts could put, you know, a work order in. I wouldn't even know about it, or they wouldn't know about it. Um, it would be helpful to us to know that progress, you know, was
Yeah.
is happening on the county side of it.
Okay.
You know, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. And, and I'll work on getting the boards some information on it.
Okay.
And, and just for some perspective, we, Scott County, we get more work orders from, from Scott County. We get at least three thousand work orders a year from Scott County and at least our, our, Fort Blackmore, for instance. Each of our employees has a hundred and thirty miles of road that, per employee that they're responsible for. So, it, it's a lot of work and we're, we're, we're trying some new things to, to try to keep up with some of it and get ideas.
And we'll talk more about that after, after this meeting.
But I'll, I'll definitely get, we'll come up with a way to get some information on, on what's open, uh, the progress of it, that sort of thing.
I think that would be helpful to each of the supervisors here as well. Highway fifty-eight tree situation, we've talked about this before.
Yes.
Uh, on highway fifty-eight, like you're going towards Hilton, uh, probably about a quarter mile up there just past the Jane Hill project that you're working on.
Yes.
There was a tree that actually fell there a couple of weeks ago across the road, fifty-eight. We've been talking about this for months. There's another one that, as a result of that one falling, it's leaning all the way across fifty-eight. It's gonna fall, okay? Somebody could put some signs out there and make that thing fall without somebody getting hurt. I guess that's the point on that. AP Quarter Highway. Pretty much all the way up through there. I mean, it's, a lot of people like to travel that road. There's a lot of traffic on it. The ditches are very close to the road. And, um, in a place or two, you know, where those culvert, um, the pavement has partially broken away there. And you try to dodge that. If you're meeting a vehicle, you practically ought to stop. And, uh, and I'll give you more information on that after this. But, but as a whole, the ditches on, on, on the, on that side of the AP Quarter Highway, there's a lot of towels that are stopped up. I told you it wouldn't be too hard on you. Long Ridge Road. I thought we, we may have talked about this, uh, before. It's off of Highway twenty-three as we get to Tennessee State Line. Where the pavement has broken up because of the fuel trucks that are going in and out of there. Excuse me. From Marger Transport, I guess you'd call it, where they can travel in and out of there. If somebody could take a look at that. I've had citizens of Little Dark call about that, so. I have a couple, three other things. I'll talk with you about that later.
Well, I'll get out to Long Ridge and, and take a look at it. Like I, like I said, we recently invested in a, a VDOT on paper. So, our guys can get out and do some paving ourselves and we don't have to rely on, on contractors, so. That, that's what we got. We're gonna take care of issues like this. So, I'll, I'll get out and look at it and see.
Appreciate that. And I'll say this, Wade and I talked here a few days ago and, uh, we talked about him coming down today and this is your first time coming up like this in this capacity before us. Appreciate you coming.
Yeah.
And Wade's always been very helpful every time I call him to try to get an issue, an issue resolved and that sort of things. So, I appreciate that very much.
I mean, just like the gentleman was talking about you guys earlier, that, you know, you serve the community. That's my job too. That's what I'm, that's what I wanna do. I try to do my best at it. And, you know, sometimes you can't get people to answer they want, but, but I do. I'm very serious about trying to do my best for the community and.
Exactly. Jack, I thought you got a passion.
Yeah, definitely.
That's what we like to see.
Well, I've, I've got several roads that, one of them was the Ball Field Road that Jim talked about. That's in my district. There's a, there's a cluster of unpaved roads that's around Addington Frame, Midway, Twin Springs. There's just a cluster of roads, Hell Springs, yeah.
Yeah, I, as the gentleman was talking, I think I've taken some notes and I, I'm gonna go out and see if there's anything we can do to make some improvements. But as you guys know, without our only option to get a dirt road paved is the secondary six-year plan.
People, people are, of course, he, he was a little different. Uh, you know, he's wanting his road paved. He's mentioned that several times to me. But people in general are getting to the point that they don't care whether it's paved or not. They just, they, they've got to have some sort of maintenance done on these roads of about, you know, I've turned in, I don't know how many work orders, you know, the simple ones are what I would call simple. They may not be simple to you all, but, you know, going out and just scraping the road, you know, and, and fixing it. That's one thing, but we're gonna have to have our ditches cleaned out. We're gonna have to have drain tiles put in and cleaned out. Until that happens, you know, there's, you can go on Hell Springs Road right, right now, I guarantee you. And there'll be fifteen tons of gravel on private property where it's washed off. You know, this is not just damaging, you know, our roads and damaging vehicles that's trying to go over it. It's damaging personal property, you know, because, you know, these, the agricultural property, you know, that's being covered by this. You know, we, we, we gotta figure out a way to control the water. And I know that's hard. Water's probably one of the hardest things to control that, that there is, but, but, you know, uh, Larray wrote about, uh, I got a call, I'd put in several, uh, work order things. And I got a call saying that they were gonna fix it. But as to my knowledge, Bill lives over there or towards that area. His family does. They, they've not done anything yet. Is that right? There's like six or seven drain tiles within a hundred yards maybe. And I, I, it's, it's almost like they've just put one in. It's really, it's fairly steep. Of course, the bus travels, the bus travels all these roads pretty much. Uh, you know, in that, in, in this cluster that I'm talking about. And I, I wish we could show it on a map. You know, it, it is, it is a cluster. Those of you who know where I'm talking about, there's a lot of roads. Uh, Snowflake Road, I mentioned that a lot. It just, it, it's the water situation. It's, uh, there, there needs to be drain tiles put in, cleaned out. I, I don't know what it would take, because, you know, I, I know it's a money issue. It takes money to do this. It takes manpower to do this, but the longer we leave it untouched, the worse it's gonna get. And they'll, I bet, I bet today, we could take a, uh, four-wheel drive truck and it would drag over a ditch where the water crosses the road. You know, you could go in, maybe I make it sound simpler than what it is, but you, you could go now and where the water is crossing the road, put a drain tile. Because we're already getting runoff onto private property. And, but it's getting all the gravel and dirt. I mean, there's a lot of these roads that's down to the bedrock. You know, there's, there's no gravel there. When they do scrape them, it's just mud. It's not, the, the Ball Field Road where this, uh, that, that he was talking about is real steep. It's, and I don't know if there's something that you all could do about that. That, that, that would help the runoff there. But it, it's real steep and, and the gravel, the last time I was there, the road was red. It was just a clay. There, there was no gravel. Uh, because all the gravel was in somebody's field down the road. Uh, you know, we're, uh, and it's not just the gravel road. There's a place, uh, and I meant to get the address. It's on seventy-one. Right down below, uh, where you turn off to go to Long Hauler Road, right, uh, J and P, the, the gas station. It's right down below there. Uh, there is, uh, I guess it's a drain tile issue. You can, it, there's, there's so much water going down through there that it's eating away from the bank of where seventy-one is. And eventually, that's gonna keep on going underneath there. But you can, you just have to see it to see.
It does. I think I may have looked at that issue. Does it look like a hole beside of the road as you're?
Yeah, there's a, there, there, there's a fence there and they, they keep it moving.
The issue there is it's a, uh, the issue's on private property. There, there's a, there's a pipe that goes under some private property there. And that pipe has failed. And if, it, it would be up to the property owner to fix that portion. If, if they don't fix that portion first, anything that we do isn't, is not gonna stay or.
So, it, it's the property owner that's in bug where that drain tile goes under seventy-one.
There, there's a, um, somebody has piped like a, like an old stream there. And that pipe has started failing. And it's on private property where, you know, we can't do anything about it. But, um, what, until that issue's fixed, there's really nothing that we can do that, that's gonna be able to, to stay because every time it rains, until that issue off of our roadway is fixed, it's just gonna wash the stone away and anything that we put in there, so. I, I've looked at that one a couple of times and, and tried to reach out to the property owner. If we're talking about the same situation, but it sounds like it.
This, this one, the, again, all the runoff is going onto one farm. And it's, it's, it's getting piled. I mean, it's probably need to eat both dirt and stone that's coming. It's, but there is, I guess, another drain tile above there that's a private drive that goes underneath that private drive. And it goes down and cuts across seventy-one onto a pasture field.
Okay. If you, could you give me an address?
Yeah, I did.
Hey, I can give you a card before I leave.
Okay, yeah. But I, I don't know. I, I, no. There's, there's so many issues, it just, I, I don't know where to begin. I, and it, it, it feels like it were, you know, uh, Joey was talking about, I, I, it wasn't our life. My, was he or our life, maybe he or me before last or something like that. Okay, he said that Scott County was number two, you know, in, with unpaid roads. Uh, you know, in the whole state. But peo- people are getting to worry, you know, they, they just, they wanna maintain, you know. If they're, you know, I'm, I'm hearing more issues like, like that. Uh, you know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out a way whether we have to reach out to somebody. If, 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 if that's something that we can do as a board to reach out to somebody in Richmond to try to get more funding or whatever manpower, of course, that's funding. Whatever it takes to, to help, you know. Since we do have the, the, this amount of roads, you know, we need, we need the manpower and the financial ability to maintain them.
Well, we, we're very aware of the issues and, I mean, I'm, I'm a hundred percent agree with you. Ditching's our major problem in, in the whole wise residency, you know, just Scott County. But we are trying different things. We, we've bought some.
How many employees y'all have at Fort Blackmore?
At Fort Blackmore, we are supposed to have, um, thirteen. And I think I've got eight nines right now. We're, we're short a superintendent. We're short a crew leader. We're short two operators, which is our truck.
Did they have, did they have twenty somewhere at one time?
Oh, Lord, yeah. Yeah, they.
So, that's part of the issue. I mean, it's not y'all's fault. I mean, it's just the fact that you, you don't have the resources you have.
Well, and typically, we, we've got hired equipment contractors that we can call for help. And, and with, with all the price increases on fuel and things, all of our contractors are dropping their contracts and, and rebuilding the fuel costs. So, we, we have no hired equipment support right now. If it is just run on that.
Yeah, talk, talk about that for, for Blackmore. Nicholsville's basically closed. And there, there's not really anybody there that, you know, uh, work, work-wise, you know, that goes out and, uh.
Yeah, we keep some materials.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but, uh, I mean, it's, it's just not, you know, somebody mentioned, and I hadn't really thought about this, but, the, you know, we, we, the state closed these, you know, Nick, basically Nicholsville, Gate City. They closed these and we lost those jobs. We lost those state-paying jobs, you know, that, that, that was there. And, uh, you know, I hadn't really thought about that, but that's right. I mean, you know, it's a loss of, of jobs. People be paying into the communities in our, our county. We, we've lost that. And it, you know, for, for the amount of maintenance work that needs to be done just in our county. I'm, I'm sure others are similar. But, but ours with those, one of the most unpaid roads. I mean, there, there has to be some sort of a maintenance schedule. And I've said that before. I don't know if that's doable. But it, and I know it takes money.
Well, like I said, we are working on some things to try to help in Scott County. We, we're buying new equipment to help with ditching to where we can run a ditching operation with less people and it's more productive. We, uh, we did a test not too long ago with our new, uh, piece of ditching equipment. And under the ideal conditions, to see how, how many miles of ditching we could do in one day. And with this new equipment, we got like eight miles of ditching in one day. But, and, and we're also looking at, through attrition, that as some people leave in other counties, we may reassign some jobs to Scott County. That, that'll give us more lives to, to help do some work. And, and then as our new hired equipment contracts and stuff, we'll have to get, and that'll get us some more help.
Well, maybe, I'll, I'll, I'll get in touch with you.
Yeah, so.
One other thing, it was, I guess, what sort of what Marshall was talking about. If we could just give the people an explanation.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, it's, that's like the Larray Road deal. And there was some others too. Then I got a phone call about saying it was gonna be fixed. Then I tell people it's gonna be fixed and it's still not, still not. And, you know, we didn't, I, I understand the inflation. It's all about the money, so.
Well, we need to do a better job contacting citizens to, to let them know what's going on. And I'll, I'll work with the managers in Scott County to make sure that they're keeping citizens there for, and calling.
Write this address down. The guy I talked to, he had contacted VDOT. It's fifty-five eighty-five River Blood Road.
I'm sorry, that was fifty-five eighty-five?
Yep. Fifty-five eighty-five River Blood Road.
Oh, River.
Yes, six fifty-three, I think, the south side of the Black River. And I, I contacted somebody about it some time ago and I don't, uh, anyway, says it's still not fixed. What is the drain pipe? It's totally blocked. It has to take his driveway out every time it rains. So, try to turn his, his driveway and his, I looked at it, it's, he said every time it rains, it's gotta be doing the driveway. So, that pipe is totally blocked. I think it's been drove on, caved down on the upper side of it, but you can't even see it. They can see the word exit, but you can't see the word enter. So, anyway, if you do that, that's. They said he contacted somebody too. I don't know if it, maybe it outbacked when Alice up was there. I don't remember. It's been a long time ago and so anyway. But he said that he can replace the pipe himself. I said, well, I don't think so. But it's all done itself. They'll let me.
Is it a cross pipe or?
It is a cross, it's a cross pipe. Cross is for River Blood Road.
Well, uh, I'll get it looked at and take.
But that, but his question was, can I fix it myself? He's, I get, I got a tractor and stuff. I'll dig it out. And I said, well, probably not.
Yeah, we kind of.
Kind of frowned.
Frowned on from that, yeah.
And that's why I told him, but I said the way, he said he's just that desperate to get it fixed.
Can you look at this one too?
Sure.
Uh, Emerald Valley Circle, where it crosses, where there, at the intersection of Ford Creek. That's a really, really bad flood, flooded area. They sent me that message a while back.
And it's a drainage issue?
It is. It is a drainage issue. Drain tile is at the intersection of Emerald Valley Circle and Ford Creek.
Any other issues that anybody needs to?
I wanna thank, if you might, I don't have anything. I mean, I wanna thank Wade for coming today. And hopefully you can do that every month or two and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start coming.
I think that's, that's.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. And, uh, I'll, I'll do my best to get these issues taken care of as quickly as possible, so.
Well, you've always been on top of it every time I've called. I appreciate that.
Give me this card, Wade.
Yeah, I've got to be with you here.
That way we can, I've read it on the phone.
I mean, Wade, if there was a way that, like on the, uh, on your website to report a road problem, if, if there was a way that we could sign up as a county or a way to, that it's coming from us, where the board could give us those requests and put that on there? Because right, right now, I, I put in several of them and people call in, but they're, they're all from buildings. So, it looks like I've got road issue, yeah, all kinds of road issues. But if there was some way that you could click that you're a local government making this request or, uh, some, some sort of mechanism like that.
I, I'll check with our, uh, the, the guy that runs that program, see in our district office in Bristol. I, I'll check with him and see if there's, if anything we can do like that.
Then that feedback that they were asking about, would, would come back to our email?
I'll, I'll see what our options are there.
Appreciate you coming.
But I, I've got, uh, four cards with me. I'm sorry.
I've got your name. Thanks for your contact.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Let me, uh, just let me know if you need anything.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Saddest take a ten minute break. Call meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is item eleven, the smart scale letter support, Ms. Starance.
You have two letters of support to consider this morning. Uh, the first one is for the Kingsport Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization to submit a smart scale project for the Weber City project, which would be from the state line to the River Bridge. Uh, it's important when you consider these resolutions to know that if you pass this resolution and it, and we move forward with the application, that you are standing behind that application as it moves through smart scale. And if it's funded, that this project will go forward. Or if you back out once pressure begins to mount from the citizens or businesses in Weber City, if that does happen, then you would be responsible for the cost, uh, that VDOT has incurred up to that point. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Uh, the first resolution is to support the smart scale project from the state line to the River Bridge. Uh, the smart scale application will be submitted by the Kingsport Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization because there is a separate pot of money, uh, that they are eligible for. And the, the weighted factors this year are economic development's thirty percent, safety's thirty percent, accessibility ten percent, congestion mitigation ten percent, environmental quality ten percent, and land use ten percent. And the second resolution is basically the same, but it would be, uh, in support of your application for smart scale, which would be from the River Bridge, um, to the Addington old, uh, at the railroad crossings there at that intersection. So, two separate resolutions.
Do we have to separate them? Can we vote on them together?
I would do them separate.
Okay. Alrighty. So, with that, uh, I hope you had a chance to look at them. I have. And we will do the first one, which is, uh, the one from the state line to the River Bridge, correct?
Correct, for the Kingsport MTPO.
Yep. Or do we have a motion on, on that letter of support?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Tipp, a second and discussion. All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I vote aye on some. Alright, the second one is from the River Bridge to, where did you say?
Chapel, let's see. Let me find the name.
Addington Hall.
Quick stop.
You have a third of the name.
Addington Hall. Addington Hall.
The name of the project is US twenty-three at Chapel Street Safety Railroad Crossing Improvement. So, that comes all the way down that Weber City quarter.
Okay.
To the Y.
Do we have a motion on the second?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Tipp made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Do your second and discussion. All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Starance. Next is the ARPA projects. The, uh, the committee met last week after we had our budget finalization. So, Ms. Starance, if you would.
The ARPA committee has three projects we would like to recommend for funding, uh, from the full board. The first one is a website upgrade and we would like to request funding of up to forty thousand dollars to redo the county, uh, website. The second one is an AFID grant match of twenty-five thousand dollars. This is a one-to-one match with a grant EDA has received to build a farmer's market in Nicholsville. And the third one would be to, um, work with a retail consultant at two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars over a three-year period. Uh, this would be something at the moment we're wanting to table, but we would like to earmark the funds, uh, for that project. And that is a three-year amount for the contract.
At one fifteen, you said?
Mm-hmm.
And what is that again?
It's for a retail consultant. Uh, it would be for, um, a retail consultant to come in and look at all county properties. And they would be the recruiter for retail type businesses. And that is a three-year contract period. We would have to do an RFP, so that's why we want it at two amount.
The second was eighty thousand?
The second one was twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Grant match for the Nicholsville Farmer's Market. The grant's twenty-five thousand, the match is twenty-five thousand.
And forty thousand for the website, that great.
At two forty thousand for a website. If it ends up being more than that, we will come back and ask for more, but that's for forever now. So the three total, a hundred and eighty thousand.
Would they be working with? P D O?
Yes.
That life?
Yes.
Can we do these together, because we can?
We can.
The committee?
Unless there's one that you're not in favor of.
If you have an issue with any, any one of these, we can do it differently, but if not, we will do it together. And we, we have these committees for a reason, and I, I'd like to take the recommendation back from that committee to go forward with it. The one thing I would like to look at down the road somewhere, we can, that life, do this first, and we'll talk about it, so. We'll do these together, it'd be forty thousand, twenty-five thousand, be a total of a hundred and eighty thousand. So do we have a motion to approve this, these projects that's presented to you from the ARPA committee?
I'll make a motion, we approve them, if you guys have any thoughts with them.
Ms. Hood made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. What I was gonna say is, we need to look, if we use our methods to do it, is look at the old jail complex, the old sheriff's office on demolition. Y'all be thinking about that, we made the research, and I'll build, probably the, the lead on this board report back to y'all on that, but we, we need to do something with that. And the storage, if they, they have stuff stored in the old jail, some kind of pod or something, stored, a temporary storage facility for that stuff. Bill, your thoughts, if you think any of this is, if it's doable, your thoughts on what we should proceed with this? I mean, you're dealing with this firsthand, I mean.
Yeah, the, the first thing to do is to figure out where we're gonna put what's stored in the, the old jail now. Some of it being evidence, we've been working with the sheriff's office on, trying to figure out what kind of facility they would need. The other stuff stored in our rooms to the clerk's office. And it's, it's also stuff that's, has to be stored for perpetuity, and so we're, we're looking at options there. As far as the demolition of the buildings, that should be pretty straightforward. And then what we want to have after, after they're demolished, if that runs, be a gravel parking lot until we decide what we want to do in the future.
Does that stuff that has to be stored, Bill, does it have to be stored in a climate controlled?
It's papered documents, a lot of it is, so I would imagine some sort of conditioned space. Which the old jail is not really that right now, so. And I'm not sure what the evidence consists of. It's locked up, you can't see in there, so.
Does that any storage room back in here that's available?
There might be some storage area, but nothing secure like that, like where you can put evidence.
Reason I was asking, if that'd be climate controlled, is, you know, you could, I was at an auction the other day, and they sold a whole bunch of, where they sold four, these tractor trailer enclosed, and I didn't know where you could use something like that or not.
I've been in contact with a pod company, and they can build the suit, whatever you need. There's another issue with housing the prisoners that they bring to the jail for court proceedings, and looking at pods. The, the only issue I have with that is everywhere I've seen doing something like that, Dixon County did that for a while, they used pods. But it's something they did temporarily while they were doing something else. So to set it up without an end game, or a plan to move from the pods into something else, I don't know if that's something that we can do long-term, or if it'd be cost-effective to do long-term.
And I know the sheriff's office has looked at conings boxes, I think that's what you're talking about, for some of their files and stuff. So that, I think that would work for them, if we could put one of those, maybe spot at the landfill or something.
Yeah, the sheriff has asked about a pod, I'm not sure what he's thinking about storing in it, up at the, where we're putting him down locked at the landfill property, in that area.
What about the building at the break place, the white building up on the hill at the county office? Would it be suitable for something like that, if it was cleaned up, could be used? You know which one I'm talking about, right behind the, right behind the cemetery office? There's a big white building there that belongs to the county office, block, center block building.
On top of the hill?
Yep.
I'm not familiar with that.
Is that the one behind Robert's tire?
The one right behind Robert's tire?
Yep.
Okay. We, we've asked for that a few times, especially for like maintenance shop, and, and saying that we would maintain it, help fix it up and stuff, but we've been denied it every time we've asked for it.
Who else?
EDA.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
We'll fix that.
We're paying the beagles.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll fix that.
I mean, it's just thought, I don't know. Something that's sitting there not used. It's like all the bees down there, sitting down there not used, not, I mean, not collecting no money. Not collecting no taxes.
Yeah. I'm with you.
Tell it like it is.
I, I'm with you, I have. As far as that problem, Ms. Barnes, I had a conversation about some things that we'll discuss later, not here, but about another option as far as space needs, and so. We'll go into close session and discuss that, but what we do, anyway, something to be thinking about, but you know, looking at the demolition side of it, and what we can do as far as storage. And this is all temporary, whoever, I mean, the judges may be concerned about something that we're doing, is, is not, you know, this is a permanent solution, but this would not be a permanent solution, but temporary. You know, we can do something different than what we're doing. It might as well, they put a lot into this, what they presented us back a couple of months ago, and I've heard a lot about the people in county about, you know, what we can and cannot afford, and so I, I'm just, you know, pretty expensive stuff, all right? Thank you, ARPA committee, I done a good job with this, and your recommendations is taken seriously, we know that it's important what you do. Anything else on that? Dunfield Days.
This is for the fireworks permit, which is on your tablet, and in your extra packet is their application. And they will be using Dynamic Effects and Fireworks Company, once again, professional fireworks display for that fireworks show, which will be September third, and it will be located on the grounds of the Crystal Road Tech Building in Dunfield. EDA has passed a resolution that that's okay to use that property. I would like to ask permission to go ahead and approve the fireworks permit. I am still waiting to get the certificate of insurance, and I will hold that permit until I get all the required documents needed. But that way, we've already got the approval done, once I get those items. They've always sent those in the past, so I don't expect any problems this year either.
All right, Tom's fireworks permit, do we have a motion to approve this park permit pending her getting the correct documentation, the insurance and so on, do we have a motion? Do you have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second. Ms. Addington.
Ms. Addington, second. I'll get, I'll get that right, but I'm getting close to getting that right. Any discussion?
Just a little change.
Yeah. All fair and open, say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. The thousand dollars on.
We've already done that, we did that last month.
Okay. All right. County attorney items, can you hear us, Ms. Keglin?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
You all have my report, I don't have anything to add, can try to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for our county attorney, Ms. Keglin? Miss you being here, but we got you, you know, anyway, personally.
Yeah, I appreciate you letting me do this.
How we done so far, you haven't had to punch me or kick me, you know, I'm sitting here.
No, I've thought about it a couple of times, but it's okay, you've done well.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All righty, item fifteen, county magistrate items, Ms. Barnes.
The treasurer's account bill to report is in your folder. Available cash after the July bills is four million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred two dollars and fifty cents. That is just a little bit, very little bit above where we were at this time last year. Claims for the month, we have a few large ones, Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission, this is repayment number three for the AFID grant, fifty thousand dollars. So we will have two more fifty thousand dollar payments back to the Tobacco Commission in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Baycore, one hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred four dollars and ninety-five cents, those are the two larger claims for the month. So total current claims and early set, it's all the same this time, total claims, two hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents is what needs to be approved for payment today.
And I'm sure everybody knows that so the, the people watching, listening would know, is Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission payment, we, we have two more payments to go. And that is because of Mount Top Timber, Dunn Gannon, where they were going, do the work there, it didn't happen, and it's all in courts, I don't know where it's all shook out, trying to keep up, but COVID messed things up. So I don't know, they, those guys are, they're dealing with it the best way they can, I guess, but that's just a repayment, we have to pay back because of that, but they'll be able to keep playing with Dunn Gannon. Anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Barnes?
I have a motion to pay bills.
All right, Ms. Addington made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Just a second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. The one thing that, I'm glad to see we've got nearly five million dollars carryover from, in our general fund, and I'm glad for that. I remember when I first got elected, that was a number that the, our, that report, those folks said we shouldn't have that much in reserve. So we're there, and I'm glad we got that much, we're able to keep that in reserve, all right.
I do have a couple of things under miscellaneous. The first, we have been having some issues at Stony Creek Park with some illegal activities. And the sheriff's office would like to request your consideration if they arrest someone on county property at Stony Creek, if they can charge them going forward, like have those people not allowed back on county property, and if they are charged them going forward with no trespassing. Or that they are trespassing. So that's something that they want you to consider, I think, they feel like that would be more teeth if someone is arrested there, if they're not allowed to come back to, because we want to keep that a family. Park, family environment park, we don't want things going on there that shouldn't be, because what, you know, that was built as a parking area for the Devil's Bathtub, and we have a lot of out-of-state people coming to that park, and we don't want that, that kind of representation hanging out there that shouldn't be.
Sally, how can we proceed with that? Can you tell us?
Um, I'm not sure, this is the first I've heard about it, but I don't, I haven't looked at it. We need a chance to.
All right.
Get, for sure.
Look at it, and see what you think, and maybe not, but you can let us know back what we, how we need to proceed with that. If you would, please. Did you hear me okay? Hello? Anyway, we'll get back with her on that and, and see what we can come up with as far as down the road somewhere, maybe next, next month, and see where, how we proceed with that.
Yeah, it's a new issue that's just come up within the last week, something new, of course, she's on vacation, we've not had a chance to discuss.
Okay.
And the second thing is the domestic violence officer for the sheriff's office is going to be changing positions there. And we currently supplement the domestic violence officer's salary, forty-nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. And she currently, that employee waives insurance, she doesn't need county insurance, so that has been a big savings. And as you know, because of the Affordable Care Act, if you have an employee that, a position, a full-time employee, then you're required to offer insurance. So what they're asking is for the county to continue that forty-nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar supplement. And that would be a forty thousand dollar salary for a domestic violence officer, because the grant pays twenty-eight seven forty-four, and they also, the sheriff's office has a fund that contributes seventy-five hundred dollars. So the total would be forty thousand salary plus benefits. Currently, the benefits that we have been paying, it has been sixty-five hundred and forty-two dollars plus the forty-nine fifty-six, so we're already contributing eleven thousand four ninety-eight, plus whatever insurance cost we would have going forward. Which can range anywhere from, you know, eight to sixteen thousand dollars roughly, based on single to family plan. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on that domestic violence officer, I think they're having a hard time if we took away the supplement, finding someone to take that position under forty thousand dollars. Because with the new legislation that's come out, starting certified officers pay is forty-two thousand. That was bumped up from the legislation that was just passed through. So just your thoughts on that, on whether you want to approve leaving that in, and let them try to hire at forty thousand for that position.
So we would be putting in around eleven thousand five hundred, plus up to twenty thousand with the insurance?
Yeah, roughly. The insurance would be your additional cost.
Your thoughts? Would this be new money, have to be approved, or is it?
We could change that if, when we update the budget, it wouldn't have to be anything that has to be done right now.
Just food for thought then, right?
I mean, I need to know whether.
You want to proceed with it, all right, do we need to vote on it, or just, just a consensus of the board?
I think a consensus would be fine.
Everybody okay with it? Not voting? See a lot ahead, Jake and Nodges.
Yes.
All right. All right, you got it.
And then one other thing, I would like authorization to advertise for a public hearing to set the new tax levy. This will have to be advertised late July, so it'll be before our next meeting. And the public hearing would be late August, because you have, because of a reassessment, you have to have a thirty-day advertisement period, so that's why I'm asking for authorization this early, because it would be advertised before next meeting.
So we couldn't get, we couldn't do it in September, had to be done late August, to have a special call meeting, or adjourned meeting, probably to do?
Yeah, it would be in adjourned meeting.
Okay. All righty, so we need authorization on this, and I think that's, need to do that, so do you have a motion to authorize Ms. Barnes to advertise this, do we have a motion? All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Anything else?
That's all I have.
All righty, Ms. Pam Cox. Tourism director.
Oh, okay.
Pam, before you get started, you can come on down.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, Jack, you know, he was sitting there next to you, and obviously you've known him for a long time.
I was gonna ask you, you know, if he was kin to you, I was gonna ask him that, but both of you are very colorful in your presentation, so.
Jack, you know, Jack, well, Jack Mack used to be, Jack Mack used to be in Trail of the Lonesome Pine.
Well, what I, what I was going to get at, and I didn't, and he's, he left. I have a pole I want to donate, you know, to, if putting up signage or whatever, it's a telephone pole, okay?
A telephone pole?
So they can cut it and use it for signage and so forth.
Oh, okay. I'm sure they'll take it. Okay. I'll tell him, I'm supposed to see, apparently I'm supposed to see him tomorrow, uh, Freddie just told me so. Right.
Is that what he told me?
So, we're going to go see Danny Dixon tomorrow. Okay, that's all, okay. Um, are you going to turn me on?
We want you to power on.
Yes, of course. And then, yeah, but then just as soon as you restart the PowerPoint, then we'll do something, and then we'll do something, and then you have to do the others. Okay?
I'll keep doing it.
Uh, you have to make it complicated, you know? Mine can't be, mine can't be too easy. You've only known for two hours, so I was going to stay.
Drop the ball, Bill.
Okay, yeah.
A lot of things going on.
I can't talk. See, I can't talk now. I can't talk about this thing. Well, I need that, I need that pressy thing too.
Are you? All right, you're in.
Okay, so, well, we got to go back, so, see, there's me. Okay, so this is my, um, uh, quarterly tourism report. And so I want to start off first telling you some good things. Um, the ADDIE, it's the American Advertising Federation. Each, um, each look, each, each community, they all have their own little advertising federations. And so they always have, um, annual award programs and your agencies and folks like that. And we could have submitted on our own. So anyway, the agency that did, um, their brochure and the map and the kiosk and everything, they submitted, um, those materials to the advertising contest. And we won the gold award for the Scott County brochure and the Scott County map, let's go. So if you all remember, that's a piece that we did last year with, um, uh, with the MLP funds, with COVID funds that we got. And then they won a silver award for the Devil's Bathtub. The ad that they did for, um, the TV ad that they did for Creation Kingdom Zoo won Best of the Show, which that is really, you know, pretty significant. And, you know, this group, this group had never worked, had never worked with, they'd never really worked with, um, tourism, with the tourism group. So they've worked with us, and then they also worked with the town of Gay City. So we did get another marketing leveraging grant. Well, actually, this one fell under the purview of, um, the Dean and Love Grant. And I will tell you that all of the grants that we had gotten in the last few years, we didn't have to have any matching funds because of COVID. But now going forward, we're going to have to have matching funds. In other words, we're going to have to come up with the twenty thousand dollars match to, um, go on with the program. Last year, they would let us use in-kind funds, but we're going to be needing to, um, have our own monies too. So we have forty thousand dollars that we're going to spend on wonder love, say, a week, a month, a year. And these are the things that we are doing. So Virginia Tourism Corporation, um, they are offering a program through CrowdRiff. And CrowdRiff is a group that they take hashtags. Like if you hashtag, if you do Instagram and you hashtag Devil's Bathtub and you hashtag Scott County, and they put them all together. And it doesn't matter who has posted it on, um, a website or anything, or on Instagram. They put them all together and they can put them on your site. So they're doing this free thing with, um, Virginia Tourism called Localhood. And we can put stories, Google Stories on there, on Virginia Tourism. And if you'll go to the Virginia Tourism site, um, I'll show you the one that is going now. But these are, these are some of, of what we've been doing, of what we've put on there. And then what happens is, once they're on, once they're shown on the Virginia, well, you don't have to, Bill, that's okay. But once they're shown, once they're shown on the, okay, go over to, let's see. No. Go, if you can, if you can, no, not that little arrow, that other arrow, that arrow, that arrow, that arrow, that arrow. That one up at the top, right there, yeah, okay. So see, you can see there's ours, discovered Devil's Bathtub. And if you click on that, help, no, 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 click on, okay. See, it shows, it'll, it'll show the stories. And it runs through, and it, and stories are the big things to do on social media and everything right now. Um, I don't really do them on Instagram or on Facebook because what happens is those only stay up for twenty-four hours. But these Google Stories that we're doing, they stay up forever. And so what these will do is, once, once they appear on the Virginia Tourism website, then they appear on our website. You don't have to show that one. But the one thing that I wanted to show you about that is, um, what has happened in what we're doing with that. Which, you know, here's Little Scott County and most of the folks that are doing the local, I mean, anybody could do it, it's free. But a lot of, you know, a lot of the places have decided not to do it because it does take a lot of time. Well, our agency is doing it for us, of course, you know, I am paying for that, we are paying for that. And that's going to come out of the twenty, forty thousand dollars that we have. But we are showing up, um, in impressions, we're showing up third. That means that, um, people are watching their stories as much, you know, more so than anybody else's. As far as completing the stories, we're second. And then interactions, going to our website, we're second. And then visiting our website, um, we show up second. So that is a huge metric for us to, um, you know, for people to be on Virginia Tourism. And then they look at that and then they go on to our website. And so we are. The main thing that we're doing with this campaign is, most of it is video. Well, really all of it is video. We are going to have, going to have to do a reprint of the brochure and everything, but, um, it's technology here. There is a, there is a, there's supposed to be.
The council is performing, won't that hit me?
No. There's supposed, there's a, there's a commercial on there with that, what Black Spot is. Can you see it? If you, yeah, if you hit that.
When day trip, weekend getaway or exciting vacation, find your wonder love in Scott County. Located in the southwestern tip of Virginia, Scott County is the place to go for some down home dining, one of the kind shopping.
Okay, so this is, this is the video that we did earlier. And what we did was we kind of changed it just a little bit. And it's now thirty minutes long, and it's got like four ads in it. And it is running, um, an hour long blocks in the tri-cities, in the DMAs. Um, it's running in Greenville Gray, Johnson City, Kingsport, Rogersville, Bristol, Norton, Lebanon, Abington, Glade, Spring, Marion and Gay City. So it's running an hour back to back. And I don't know exactly what time it comes on, but, um, you know, it is, it is running. So it's an hour long show, it's the, you can watch that, you can watch that on our website. That's still on our website if you want to, if you want to watch it. It's a little different from what you're seeing right here, but you can still go up and watch that. And then, um, then we're doing also, then we're also doing, um, commercials. And if, I think you're going to have to show them, we've got four thirty-second commercials. Um, if you, I guess you'll have to hit it, I'm sorry.
Find your wonder love in Scott County, Virginia, your destination for family-friendly fun. Explore the beauty of nature, have a close encounter with exotic animals, and dance to the music at Carter Family Fold. Experience natural tunnel for a ride on a chairlift and tour through history. And rest at any of our comfortable bed and breakfasts, cabins or rentals. With all the great restaurants and shopping to you, hits mountains of fun. Discover Scott County, stay a week, a month, or a lifetime.
Okay, then if you'll go over and plug that in.
Planning a day trip, weekend getaway or exciting vacation, find your wonder love in Scott County. Located in the southwestern tip of Virginia, Scott County is the big place to go for some down home dining, one of the kind shopping and comfortable accommodations. Here in the heart of the Appalachian Mountains, you'll find tasty treats, watch history come alive, enjoy tongue-tapping shows, model on exotic animals and experience breathtaking natural wonders. Discover Scott County, stay a week, a month, or a lifetime. Find your wonder love in Scott County.
Then, there's two more. Sorry.
Find your wonder love in Scott County, Virginia. This Appalachian community offers endless outdoor recreation adventure. Experience the swirling Devil's Bathtub, one of the top scenic destinations in Virginia. Discover the majestic beauty of natural tunnel and enjoy epic hiking, biking, camping, kayaking, fishing and more. At the end of the day, you'll find plenty of great local restaurants and homestyle accommodations. Discover Scott County, stay a week, a month, or a lifetime. Find your wonder love in Scott County, Virginia. This beautiful Appalachian community is the place to go for tasty dishes and unique shopping. Try some down home cooking at the local legend, King of the Strive Inn. Enroll in a delightful treat at the award-winning Family Bakery. Or take the Gut Buster Ice Cream Challenge at Teddy's Restaurant. Scott County is your shopping destination for fashion, collectibles and fun gifts at all of our one of a kind shops. Discover Scott County, stay a week, a month, or a lifetime.
So.
Find your wonder love.
Find your wonder love.
So, sorry. So we have four different commercials. It's divided into outdoors dining and shopping, entertainment lodging in general. And, um, so it's running on, in linear TV. Um, you get about thirty-three thousand, almost about forty thousand impressions a month. And then it's running on streaming TV in Knoxville, in the tourist markets that we've identified. Kind of like within, you know, about a three hour drive because of the gas right now. Um, and we did go a little bit out, out a little bit further. We get great, we get great reception from, um, the northern Virginia area. I guess it's, you know, it's, it's an easy drive down here to this market. Um, and then we're also playing one, they're also on social media, um, on Facebook, they're on Google search, they're on YouTube pre-roll. And, um, it's playing, choosing the, the four same commercials, just alternate in and out. And we do have a YouTube channel now, we don't have a lot of things on it, but we just keep trying to, you know, build that up. Um, I did see, I did see, um, one of the television spots did show up this morning on, on Facebook as I was looking. Um, so I always just go real quick through Facebook and that did show up. And we're also doing part of, part of this, um, grant that we applied for. They really wanted you to work with the visitor centers in the, in the region, in the area, in the state. And so we are, we are doing, um, one of the digital spotlights at Rocky Gap. It's a two-minute video, and I'm not, I'm not going to show it, um, it'll just take too long. And then you got extra points if you included places, um, if you included all those. And we're doing brochure placements, um, and at Rocky Gap. Rocky Gap is where Back of the Dragon is, and then Lamb'sburg, and then that's right, that's right there at that eighty-one, seventy-seven, um, interstate areas. And then Bristol, of course, so. The other thing is, if you all remember last time I told you that we had talked to DDA about using that property to put in a visitor center. Based upon the information that we had gotten from, you know, that grant-driven, um, visitor survey. And, you know, we still want to address the concerns of our visitors. They still need to be able to find, you know, their way around, they need the signage, they need this, they need that. Um, they need a way to be able to get in touch with us, um, you know, just to see what all is going on here. So Frida and I went to Bowling Rock and looked at a kiosk that they have up there. Their kiosks are, I mean, there's different ways that you can, um, go about doing a kiosk. And if we were to do a kiosk, that would be through the thirty thousand dollars in the ARPA grant that goes to, um, tourism. But we haven't, we haven't really decided yet what to do about that. Um, we're going to have a meeting this month with my tourism venues and, you know, just kind of talk to them and see better ways that we can help them. And I suppose, I still say, I still say that the best piece of property, um, even to put something like that is, is the property that they wouldn't let us have for a visitor center, um, because of the traffic and the ability to turn, you know, exit right and exit left. Whereas if we put it up here, um, at Moccasin Gap, you can only go, that's one way in and one way out. You can't make a left and turn any longer. So, you know, we'll, we'll just see. But, um, we have to apply for that money by the end of the, by July, uh, December of the thirtieth, correct?
Excellent.
Okay, so, and then for National Tourism Week this year, we sent out the information that was the result of our visitor survey. We sent that to all the folks in the area. And then we also did that little video that appeared. Um, we also participated, we also participated in the Virginia Tourism Welcome Center Fan Tour. And, you know, we were approached to do that first, um, to bring all of those visitor center folks here. But we couldn't afford to do it. I mean, I saw, I, I signed the checks for, I approved the funds for, um, Heart of Appalachia. And just the, um, lodging alone was twelve thousand dollars. So, so we need to thank Heart of, Heart of Appalachia for, um, footing the bill for this. But they took them all over the region and we went to, we started out that day, it was pre-COVID. And, you know, and many, you just never can tell. We started out the Daniel Boone Interpretative Center. Um, we went to Natural Tunnel State Park, they went to the Wilderness Road Block House, they went to the zoo. And at the zoo, uh, the bus got stuck. You're sitting there, you know, and the, the worst thing that can happen to one of those tour buses, it's not really that the bus gets stuck, it's that you break the windows. And there are trees were hanging down, and that's what you could tell, that's what he was concerned with. So we need to, you know, kind of do, do, we, we have gotten feedback on that. And there's some, some things that need to be addressed and concerned, addressed with some of the venues and everything. Just, you know, minor things that we need to tell them to fix in case, you know, we bring other tour groups in to see them. And so we took them to Carterfold that night, they ate. The Templetons graciously let us have dinner that night at their venue at the Crooked River, um, at the Crooked River Lodge. And, you know, it was just, it was just outstanding. Um, we were sitting there and, you know, it had gotten a little bit cold. And so the fog was rising up out over the valley, and it was just absolutely gorgeous, stunning. They, um, they have loved it. I, I've seen and talked to several of them since then, and they're like, can we, can we come back to Scott County and the Heart of Appalachia? And I'm like, well, just come on. So, um, these are the events that worked this spring. And, you know, I will say that most everything has returned to normal. And, you know, I will say that most everything has returned to normal. So, and that's, you know, that is a nice thing to see. So, we did run the tunnel, that's what we kicked off with. And Frank Kibler, y'all know Frank, Lynn Wisco. He has run that race and done that race for the last twenty-two years. And he retired, this was his last race that he, um, put together and everything. So, they gave him a nice golden white plaque and everything. And fortunately, it wasn't as cold this year as it was last year. I, I mean, it was just awful last year. But, so, um, then they did Gravel at the Gate. They changed, that, that's the event that they changed the name of. And moved the date, moved the time, and I think that really hurt their participation this year. They were, went from almost a hundred riders last year to twenty-five this year. Um, so, they kinda need to, but, you know, that's, that's a Gay City event. They just kinda need to think about, you know, if you've branded something, one thing, and people realize that that's what it is, that's kinda, you know, once you start branding, it's kinda hard to change it. But, that's just my own personal opinion. Um, does not reflect the views of the board of supervisors or anybody else. I just thought they were saying. Um, okay, and then they had, they did do a new event in Downtown Gay City this year, which was an overwhelming success. They did this on Memorial Day weekend. They did their first inaugural Jeep Jamboree, and it was packed. The whole street was lined. It was, I think they were very, very well pleased with what happened with that event. Um, if you, oh, they also, unfortunately, Nicholsville Days was going on at the same time. Um, I did, I did get up to Nicholsville Days and get to take photos and judge the dog show. I judged the dog show with Bill's wife, Alana, and, um, but then apparently, I was not dang it quick enough to get everything posted that day online and everything. And somebody was very, very extremely critical of the fact that I wasn't just jolly on the spot and didn't have everything up there where I should have. So, I apologize, I apologize to that person kinda sort of. Um, if you all, I'm sure everybody knows that Rita Forrester, who is the executive director of the Carterfold, won the most prestigious award ever this year. She received the Virginian of the Year Award. And I can remember, she called me, and she said, she said, she said, "This just doesn't sound right to me." She said, "Some man from Farquhar or..." She said, "I don't know how you say it," I said. I said, "I think it's Farquhar." And then somebody, somebody corrected me, and it's Fakir, Fakir. She said, "Somebody's called me," she said, "It must be a joke." She said, "I've won some big prestigious award." And, um, she's like, "I don't want it." And she said, "And I've got to go do this, and I've got to do that." And I'm like, "What is it, Rita?" And she said, "I don't remember." She said, "I don't know what it is." And so, she goes, and she goes to, um, you know, to, uh, Richmond. And they give her this big presentation, and then you, you, you see this story in the paper. And I call her up and I'm like, "Dang it, you're the Virginian of the Year." I said, "Do you not realize what a big honor that is?" And she goes, "Do y'all know Rita very well?" She's so humble, and she's just kinda like, "Well, I don't know how." But, so, so, then they had, then those folks came down. I called them, I call them the secret society, but they, they work with, uh, the group there, out of Charlottesville, out of the, um, Shawesville Law School or something. And so, they had a big dinner for, Danny was there. Um, we, she invited a lot of folks. She wanted to show them what true country cooking was all about.
It was good.
Treated her so nice and everything. And, um, so, they presented that to her at the fold so that everybody, and Carson Peters played that night. So, you know, it was, it was a big deal. You know, we might want to think about doing something for her, too. So, it's just a fall. Um, I know since I'm being recorded, I didn't want to say that for her.
They probably didn't hear it, couldn't go away.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, Downtown Gay City at the Clinch Mountain Music Fest. Um, that's something new that they did this year. So, it was just Avengers Festival. The lady that, um, wrote the Virginia is for Adventurers, she did part of her scavenger hunt here in, um, Scott County at Natural Tunnel. And she got some great publicity on that. And then, of course, we had the Fourth of July Parade. That was the first time that Gay City has done a Fourth of July Parade, and I saw some of y'all in the parade. Um, that, but, yeah, I'm not real sure. I think the United, the Gay City United Pentecostal Church, I think that they're the ones that sponsored this event for Gay City and the Gay City Frontier. But it, it was, it was nice. And then, um, of course, Weber City did some fourth stuff, and Dunn Gannon had their Fourth of July Parade. Who's those cute little girls? Do you know those little girls?
Yes, yes.
Are they related to you?
No, no.
Well, they're, they were so cute.
Rue, uh, Dooley, and Everly Dooley.
Rue?
Sisters. Rue is the little, the little one in the blue dress.
Rue, that's such a cute mom.
They are Dwight and Mildred Lane's grandchildren, grand-grandchildren, actually.
They're adorable.
Me and Michael Dooley's grandchildren.
Oh, okay. So, and then, um, so, we had some new businesses, I'm glad to say. We did some ribbon cuttings at Boutique Two Tw- Two Seventy-Six. And she, I, I stopped in to see her a couple of times, and she said the business is doing great for her. She's just as excited today as she can possibly be. And we asked her where she got the name Two Seven Six, and she was like, "Well, that's six change here, Two Seventy-Six." So, I would, I would've never thought about that. Um, and then, we went to the grain bin. And I know everybody, if you drive Waddle Gap Road, you know, you were wondering what in the world is going in there? What in the world is going in there? And she's got this beautiful shop in there. Um, so, if you, if you haven't stopped, and have you all gone back?
Well, I have, I remember some of you up here at the last board meeting, but I saw we bought a quilt from there.
Oh, okay. So, she, yeah, she has just some really interesting stuff. Um, yeah, so, you know, as far, you know, as, as far as I can tell, you know, we are, things are back to normal. Um, these are upcoming events. They are doing Railroad Days, um, July the sixteenth. I don't know if they'll have a train this year. Um, remember last year, they didn't have a train. And so, I've not been to, I've missed a couple of meetings, so I don't know what's been worked out. Um, they're doing, uh, an entrepreneur workshop, August the fourth, at the Pioneer Center. Gay City Frontier is doing Back to School Bash. Carter Family Fold is doing Appalachian Rising, August the sixth. Duffield Days is...
That's the wrong day.
That's right, I've written wrong dates there. And how I got that, I don't know. That would be...
The third, on Saturday.
The third, it's the, it's the, it's the second and third, right? So, it's Friday and Saturdays.
No, it's always Saturday through Monday.
Oh, okay.
In the Papa Joe thing, usually on Monday, Labor Day.
No, it's on, it's on, uh, Sunday.
So, it'd be the third and fourth.
Third, okay. So, and Downtown Gay City is doing their first, um, praise concert, um, Rise Up and Praise Worship Concert with, um, a group, gospel group called Unspoken. Papa Joe Smitty Festival is going on. We have our first meeting for that next week. Um, Pungbo Farms is reopening. They will be open September the first through October the third first. I had talked with them, he said, "Yeah, we can't wait to be back open." So, um, IBMA, the International Bluegrass Music Association, is happening again, um, September twenty eighth through October first in Raleigh. We normally go to that, um, just may go again this year, I don't know. A Lightning of the Tunnel is going back on, and the Gay City Christmas parades are going on in turn-up. So, we are doing, I'm only two heads up, on July the twenty-eighth, we're doing a venue meeting. I'm sending out my invitation button today. Um, and I'm trying to invite all of the venues that have something to do with tourism, and I'll put something on Facebook, too, to tell them to come. And we're doing that at the Daniel Boone Wilderness Road Interpretative Center, six o'clock, and we're gonna talk about, you know, the kiosk, whether they think the kiosk will be beneficial for them, because there are things that you can add with the kiosk, such as, you know, if they wanted to, um, have coupons or things like that. But all of those extra things, you chat on, they cost money. So, we need to see, you know, what, and even if they think a, a kiosk would be good, I don't know now what's the best thing to do with that, since we couldn't do a visitor center, um, what their biggest concerns are, and the ways that we can help, uh, help them from a tourism perspective. Um, you know, I've seen the folks at Clinch River Lodge, they've been doing great. I see their little bus do their turn, even with that, even with that construction there at the, um, bridge, you would think that that would've really hampered them because they have to do that little turn right there. They're still being able to make that, so it still seems to be okay. Um, free publicity right now, we're at one twenty-nine eight oh eight. That's down from just a little bit from what it normally is. Um, and then, so our social media, it, you know, it just keeps going up. Um, I continue to do the weekly emails. And one thing, one thing that has become interesting this year is that those weekly emails are, they gain, they gain in popularity. And, I mean, we have like about a twenty percent open rate on those, which industry-wide is about six percent. So, that's really a pretty good thing. And so, do you all have any questions? I'll let you pass those in case you want to, in case you need to remember what I said.
Any question, comments, thoughts?
Just comment, just don't give up on your passion, what you're trying to do, you know, with something on this end of the county in terms of visitation center.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, well, one thing, one thing, too, if we do a kiosk, you've got to have, um, it has to have Wi-Fi. So, um, have to have Wi-Fi operated, and I don't know if there's Wi-Fi up there at that anyplace else, but maybe we'll, we'll work with, um, Scott County Telephone Co-op to put Wi-Fi wherever they are. And, um, if we do end up doing one, and make that a Wi-Fi hotspot, so, does anybody?
Anything, Ms. Cox?
Oh, I have something. So, I'm gonna stay for a little while. So, and if I'm gonna stay for a little while, I've decided something. I've decided we all need to do something amazing. Let's do something amazing.
I'm glad you're staying, I'm just sorry we're not going to, um, Australia. Was it Australia?
Well, we can still go, she's, she's still going, she's still going. My husband still ain't going, so I still need somebody to go with.
All right, sounds good, we'll have a blast.
Yeah, um, so, let's do something amazing.
What did you have in mind?
I have something on.
I knew you do, that's why I'm going.
I, I have something in mind, and I'm, I, and I'm, I'm not gonna let it go.
All right.
I'm not gonna let it go. You have a property sitting there, that there's not been anything done. Let's build something there. Let's build that agriculture center and that indoor-outdoor facility. Um, and then, if we could get somebody that wanted to do a housing development in that area, that could do an equine community and have some trails and some things like that. And there is somebody that might be interested in doing that. Don't y'all wanna do that?
Sounds very interesting.
Well, okay. Why don't you put, why, why can't we put, why can't, why can't we put it to a... See what the citizens wanna do? Isn't there a thing called a referendum?
There's a little thing called money that we're gonna have to come up with.
Oh, no, I, no, I have that settled, too. So, you can take that jail and stuff, and the courthouse. This wasn't my idea, it was somebody else's idea. So, you can move them in here, and you can move our offices to where the Television building was. And then, see, we're all over there together. And we're over there with the, um, equine and the agriculture center and the indoor-outdoor center, and we'll all have a jolly good time. I guess you want me to sit down now, don't you?
I like it, you know, I'm a big supporter.
Thank you, what?
I'm a big supporter of you.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Well, so, so, you, you don't know until you try something. Right?
Absolutely.
A center like that would be ideal.
It would be ideal.
We are so, we are so close.
I've, I've mentioned it a few times, and in the past, other boards have even done studies. I, I think I told you about Scott County.
I've got, I've got the study, I've got the study.
You know, at, at the time, it was a lot of money, and I'm sure it's still a lot of money.
That we, yes, but we can get money.
But it, I mean, you know, the, the space, not, not, not just office space, but you could have, uh, uh, like a small arena, you know, where you could have rodeos, uh, agricultural shows, uh, expos, farm expos. All, I mean, it's, there's all concerts. You could have all kinds of things that would bring people in. And then, of course, to make sure, you know, they didn't spend their money here.
Right.
Uh, you know, that's, that's, that's how we pay for it. But, and that, that's something I've, I've sort, and you may have the numbers on this. Uh, I don't know, I may need to talk to somebody in DDA, or maybe we can find out. But how, the, how much money we think people are coming, you know, uh, is there a way for us to look at people's receipts?
Yes, yes. We, I mean, you, we, we can pay to have an economic development study done.
Yeah.
Um, that, what's that group called, the Chumic? I don't know, it starts with a C, and I can't really think.
I, I'd like to know the numbers. I mean, that's, that's what it all boils down to, is how much, you know?
Well, what, what, what do you call those, um, feasibility study? You just do, you know, have somebody do a feasibility study. You start there, and then if it's, um, you know, so I, I'll go then, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Pam Gerson, extra, if you want.
All right, we're down to item seventeen, comment requests, recommendations. Did you have any of that?
Thanks staff for all their hard work.
Mr. Attipton?
Yes, I think a good board. We had a random belt visit, and so we're waiting on the results probably today or tomorrow. I feel good about that. But, um, we're grateful to be here, so I think the board for all that you do, and I think the staff, um, I think we, we have a good board, and, uh, a lot of good, interesting ideas, and I believe everybody here wants to serve the people. Uh, we don't look at it as a district, we look at it as a county as a whole. That's how that it ought to be. And, uh, want to thank, uh, Ms. Nelson and, uh, Mr. Osner for coming today and them sharing, uh, about the, uh, the conviction of states issue. And we, and if you haven't been hearing about that, you should. Uh, we should try to get on board with that, if you're not. And, um, was grateful to be out in the parades, uh, on the Fourth of, well, I guess it's Saturday for the Gay City Parade, and then, uh, on the Fourth of July for the Dunn Gannon Parade, to be a part of that, and to see the people coming out, uh, finally getting back out into the communities and out in the open again. And so, again, appreciate the staff for all that you do. And you make us look good, so, appreciate it. And you make it us look good, so appreciate that.
Mr. Harrod, have anything?
I appreciate what everybody's done. Glad we've made it through another fiscal year, so hopefully this next one will be better.
Mr. Rick?
I, I really have enjoyed all the presenters we've had today, from the first to the last. I, I think it adds to our meetings a lot when we have people come in and express their opinions.
Okay.
And I am, gives you something to think about, don't you?
She would be paying if she didn't give you something to think about.
It wouldn't be bad.
Yeah.
But she, she gives you a lot to think about, especially the nice things she threw out there. I appreciate all of you.
All right. Ms. H?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Addams?
I do have something. And I do want us to think about, consider, and I don't know, um, what everyone else feels, but I will tell you, um, I want us to reconsider, consider, amend, do something to this food tax that we've imposed. Um, the small businesses that we have put that on is just a handful. And it is a lot more than, it is a lot, in my opinion, it's more trouble for them than it's going to be for us to, for it to be worth. Um, the front porch in Fort Blackmore I know is affected by this. Midway Market's affected by this. The ones in Duffield are affected by this. And I, I understand that the McDonald's is the largest generator of those funds. But I think we need to really think about what we have done to those smaller businesses. Because we have heard that, we have, in my opinion. And I don't feel like I fully, fully thought about that and considered that when I voted. So, I do think we need, I mean, we've imposed another tax on them as a government entity. And I mean, I'm not, and I understand, I just don't think that, I, I don't think that it's going to be worth. I think we need to think about putting a amendment to it to have, that when they exceed a certain amount, or, you know, let the smaller businesses that are doing this fall into this category, maybe. Um, I don't know, I mean, I, I want to talk to Sally about it, I messaged her. Um, I just feel really strongly that we need to think about changing or ed- editing that or amending that, because it is a lot of paperwork for those folks. And we have put an 11% tax increase, or we have, we are collecting 11, that they are 11% taxes on Front Porch, uh, Midway Market, um-
Rowley Mart?
Rowley Mart. I think we need to think about that, because I, honest to goodness, don't think that the, and the more I thought about it, the more it's on my heart, it's burdening my heart to, to say something about it. Because I, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't feel like I fully thought about the implication of that before, because I don't think what we're going to gain from those smaller businesses is worth the trouble that it, that it's, that it does, that it has caused, you know?
I can get you a report that shows what was collected. We received a first payment in July, and I know that was close to $14,000. And I know, um, Beverly at Front Porch still doesn't have her cash register where it can do all the tax buttons. Rowley Mart, I talked to them, they didn't have any trouble with implementation. Um, but I do know that we got almost $14,000 for the first-
I'm sure that was from McDonald's.
I'm not sure who it's from, that's the report I need to see.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see that too, if you don't care.
Can I back up and say something, or can we back up? I, I fully agree with you. There's, there's some, you know, I, it's one thing about the paperwork, I'm sure there's a lot of paperwork, you know, that, that goes and all that. But, you know, I've talked to a few of the smaller, like gas stations, you know, they'll, they'll make biscuits and, you know, sandwiches and stuff like that. You know, one thing that we might see is that they'll cease to do that.
Yes, and that's what I'm, that's what's concerned.
We'll drive them from doing that. Uh, one of the gas stations I talked about, and, you know, that I talked to, you know, this is a, this is a bad time, you know, for all businesses, uh, you know, with, with the, uh, uh, pay scale and, uh, you know, the minimum wage, things like that. Uh, but I was talking to him, you know, the EPA, or not the EPA, it's the Virginia, uh, I guess, I, I guess, I don't know.
The U?
I guess, that's, that's what it was, but anyway. Uh, forced him to buy a $20,000 savings bond in, in case something happened. But if, 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 if he would have a spill, that's the first thing they get. They get that to help cover the, you know, and, and, and we can go on and on about these little, little things, you know, we might not think that's a lot over a year's time, but that's a lot on a small business, uh, where they're not, where they're struggling right now anyway.
Yes.
Uh, time-wise, I think it's a, it was a bad time to implement that. Uh, and I know we have to run the county, you know, that's, uh, but, uh, I, I think we need to look more into it, maybe, uh, if there's ways to adjust that. I don't know, but, uh, but, you know, I, I've had the same, same feelings. Okay, part of my opinion, I don't have anything to add. Have you been meeting productive, uh, anyway? We will meet back here, what's the date in August? You know, everything close session?
No, okay.
How's that on?
August 3rd.
August 3rd, all right. So, with that, we will meet back then, nothing else, we will stand adjourned.